Good evening and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee the whole meeting, Wednesday, September 28th, 2022. Could I have roll call, please?
There are nine present, one presiding, two absent.
Let the record show that Commissioners Bill Anderson and Eric Menkens are excused this evening. And just a quick update on Bill is that he is resting comfortably. He's still in Seattle. He expects to be there for a couple more weeks, but he's awake and feeling much, much better. And we're just awaiting his return. And he did say he missed all of us and he wanted to thank us all for our prayers and our thoughts. He was very, very thankful, I can tell you that. So he'll be back. He can't wait to get back in the saddle. So at this time, I would ask Commissioner Sorge to lead us in the prayer and the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Fellow Commissioners, Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. At this time, I would open up any public comment and any item on tonight's agenda. If there's anybody who care to make a public comment, please come up to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. And there's a little button on the bottom that turns on the mic.
My name is Joel McGrath. My address, my work address is 102 South Arizona Butte. As I said, my name is Joel McGrath, and I am one of the property owners along with Sam and Susan Stone of 137 Park Street. I have a vested interest in history on the lots on Park Street that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I'd like to give you a brief history of my interactions and pursuit of buying the lot adjacent to my building that has been in the works since 2019. I have been unable to renovate our property since 2019 when we were made aware that the demolition of the property to the west of our building. I have worked closely with a director, with the director of the Community Development Group, along with our other city officials over the past several years, who were trying to get the building torn down. I feel I have been more than accommodating to the city in the lengthy delays in this process. I have also given them access to my building to assist in the study and demo of this property. On multiple occasions, I have expressed interest in the lot west of my property to add to allure the development of what we want to do on 137 Park. Over the years, I have been very vocal on my interest of this lot and have been told by multiple city officials that they would work with me to purchase this property. My co-owner, Sam Stone, was approached around 2019 by Karen Burns to see if he would be interested in purchasing the lot offset, sorry, to purchase the lot to offset the demolition cost, at which this time Sam answered absolutely. The reason I am here today is to express my concern on the activity that took place in combining the two lots into one parcel and not giving myself or Sam Stone a heads-up that it was going out to a community, out to the community to submit bids. Sam lives out of state and doesn't get the Montana Standard. I was out of town for much of August 2022 and was made aware by a friend that was reading the paper on August 21st, '22, that the proposals were due on 8 August '24. I also am aware that it was published in a small, in a small black section of the Montana Standard on two other occasions in the beginning of August. I feel that I was not given the courtesy by the department that put the proposal out there. They were very aware I was extremely interested in the lot. I feel with my story and cooperation in this process, as well as paying property taxes on a building for over seven years, it's unfair to my partner and I. I'm here today to ask for consideration of revisiting the process that took place and giving us the opportunity to have a fair shot at one or both of these lots. We want a fair shot at one or both of these lots. We've been, we've been talking about it for years. The other concern I have is why, why were the two parcels made into one at the last minute? I'd like to end by pointing out, I have been in Butte all my life, have had an uptown local business for 26 years. In the past, I have had nothing but success dealing with city officials, URA, et cetera. This is nothing personal to anyone. I just feel like this occasion, I was overlooked and not treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comment on any items on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. I move on to Section 1, Bid Openings, Public Hearings and/or Presentations. We have a public hearing. This is item number one, Council Bill Number 2022-10, Ordinance Number 2022-10, an ordinance amending Chapter 13.12 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code entitled "Solid Waste Management Facility," specifically amending Section 13.12.070 and providing for an effective date herein. I was advised by Mark Neary, our Public Works Director, that he is awaiting some further information that he would like to put this, cancel this particular public hearing, and he will be presenting it again in a different form at a later date. So if there's nothing from council members, any questions about this, I would ask my vice chair to make a motion.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Communication or Council Bill Number 2022-10, Ordinance Number 2022-10 on file.
County Attorney Joyce, does the council bill still stand as just the public hearing that we are not doing? Okay. So we're not actually going to cancel the bill, but we are going to place the public hearing.
All right.
And you just said that.
Thank you. Yeah. Do I need to do some in mind?
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion in a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to place the public hearing for this Council Bill 2022-10 on file, and we will await a further, at a further date to have another public hearing. To everyone, any questions? If everyone please vote. Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten ye, zero nee.
Ten ye, zero nee. Motion passes. Moving on to presentation, item one is Communication Number 2022-471. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Council Commissioners for time on the September 28th, 2022 council meeting for presentations related to the proposed development of 123 to 135 East Park Street. Director Burns, floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Members of Council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development. And tonight, we are here to hear the proposals that were received for the RFP that was published in the Montana Standard three weeks in a row in August. On August 7th, it was first published in the Montana Standard and made available on the Butte Silver Bow website. Proposals were due on August 24th. It was published for three consecutive Sundays. And just one clarification, the lots have not been combined into any sort of joint ownership. There are two lots for proposal that are still owned by the Butte Rescue Mission, and there is one lot that is owned by Butte Silver Bow. The only thing that has been combined is the marketing of these properties so that they could be looked at as an entire development over across, across three separate lots. So lots 15 and 16 are owned by the Butte Rescue Mission, and Lot 18 is owned by Butte Silver Bow. And those three lots are the ones that this development would cover, possibly. So we did receive three proposals back. Those presenters will be here tonight to give, give you all an idea of what they plan to do with the property. Our first proposal that we received is from Luke Anderson and his partners, and he will be giving that first presentation tonight. We will also receive a presentation from J.J. Adams, who also responded to the RFP, and then by Mr. Jay Platt, who is also going to present his plan to you tonight for that land.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If you give us your, remind us of your names. I know Andy, of course.
I'm Andy Durkin. I'm an accountant in town.
Ross Richardson.
Accountant.
And I'm Luke Anderson.
Hello. Thank you.
Luke is the majority owner of Up Top LLC that we'll talk about here in a second. And first off, we'll thank Chair Shaw. Thanks for having us. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to present the proposal. For the lots, ultimately, it started back in 2018, actually, when Up Top LLC, I think everybody probably knows the apparel business in town, moved their business back to Butte from Missoula, and in the process, made some investment in town and also loaned some other vendors, some funds to ultimately start their embroidery and screen printing businesses as well. And ultimately, from that grew their businesses as well. So ever since then, they've rented some office space, some warehouse in uptown Butte, and have had a desire to open a retail facility, and ultimately even invest more in uptown Butte. Uptown Butte is near and dear to all of our hearts. We all work up there. And ultimately, looked at some different opportunities to make some renovations, and ultimately thought that the amount of investment and uncertainty and difficulties in obtaining financing for something like that, a large endeavor project, proved a little difficult, and reducing the risk ultimately would be something like this to build new. So they're looking at something like that, and ultimately would look at multi-level, multi-use facility. And the investment team consists of all local people born and raised in Butte, ultimately. So in just thinking about the initial proposal, it's new. Obviously, we haven't had a ton of time to think about all of this. We had initial discussions, and we should apologize that you don't have Anthony Lazovich, who's the engineer from WET, speaking tonight. Unfortunately, he had to be gone, so you're, you're left with us. But we have had discussions with Water and Environmental Technologies and initial discussions with SMA Architects as well. And the picture that you're looking at is, is by no means our design proposal, but it does reflect some of the ideas and goals that we would have for the lot. One of the goals is to fill in the entire lot itself, filling that in. So as you're driving down from Park Street, everything is filled in there and kind of matches with the historical architecture and surroundings of the area as well. Spending money on a brick facade and articulate details, things like black ironwork, copper trim, that would definitely fit in with the architecture around the area. Making sure we have some attractive exterior lighting, not only improving the area, but improving safety as well. And multi-use facility, which we'll look at here as well, consisting of the first floor, retail facilities. Up top, like we said, has a desire to open a retail establishment. Currently, they just have the warehouse facility. That would take up a large space for one of the retail spots, and then in the back of the building in the rear would be more of their warehouse facility. The remaining area would be filled with other retail shops as well. And then thinking about the second floor, Class A office space and/or residential condos ranging from anywhere probably from 1,000 to 1,600 square feet. And then third floor, looking at more residential condos likely, and thinking about some of the design goals would incorporate things like some balconies that might fit in with the historic architecture, thinking of some of the things that we see on the facade of the Thornton Building or those balconies off of the Metals Bank Building that would really fit in with uptown Butte. And some of the other pictures there just kind of represent what the inside of the building could be, kind of open, industrial look that ultimately leaseholders could develop themselves if they wanted to as well. More photos there, and again, just want to stress that that's not necessarily the design proposal, just the, the goals and ideas that would consist of right now. Looking at initial dollar amounts, it's a large lot, and the goal initially was, is, is still fill in that entire lot. Project costs reaching out to different contractors currently range from quite a bit when we think about different project costs. So it'll take us a little bit more work as far as finalizing what those plans would be, but to develop the entire thing, costs are probably looking at at least $7 million currently. The investment team consists of four local investors that would be providing the necessary funds for down payments and working capital. Based on that dollar amount, we expect the project to qualify for the new market tax credits, which would help considerably with the amount of capital needed for the facility. Potential partnership with the Butte Silver Bow Economic Development Committees, looking at potential for rural design debt, rural development debt guarantees. And then we've had some discussions with the URA boards, members of the URA Board, thinking about some of the different grant assistance that could be available for that as well. But something important that we're thinking of is, you know, obviously, the added tax base for uptown Butte would definitely be big, and something that would fit in with uptown. Timeline, right now, we all know the construction industry is kind of in flux at the moment, but the goal ultimately would be to begin construction early next spring, later next spring, before the end of June of 2023, with the goal of ultimately project completion later in the summer of 2024. Obviously, you know, based on various factors, potentially going into a recession right now, we are concerned about interest rates. We're definitely watching that, what that would do to affect things like the payments on debt service and stuff. So we're continuing to watch that as well as availability of materials, contractors, all the like. And ultimately, thinking about the benefits of the project, we want to fill in the entire area, making sure that it fills and matches the historic architecture and the historic feel of uptown Butte, ultimately bringing more people to East Park Street. Thinking about that, that block, at least in, in my history, it's, it's been somewhat of a blighted area that, that we think that this could be an awesome opportunity to really improve it. So we think there's opportunity there. Ultimately, more people working and living in uptown Butte. Up top themselves have some goals to hire some more people, purchase some more equipment, do some things, and ultimately have that retail facility as well. And potential, some initial discussions with other people that would have some office space there, as well as potential for a restaurant, things like that in the area. Improving the outdoor lighting, the ultimate vision of walking down East Park Street, improving that safety is something that we think could really be a game changer for future development in, in East Park Street. And then thinking about the tax base itself, when we look at those dollar amounts, it's probably roughly $2 million of added tax revenue for Butte Silver Bow over the next 20 years. So we think this could be something, it could be a really good opportunity for East Park Street. Ultimately, the project just began with us seeing the, the opportunity to submit the proposal and ultimately not wanting another parking lot in uptown Butte, and ultimately some of the, the individuals that want to invest in uptown Butte and ultimately have those facilities. So we're pleased that the opportunity is there, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. I would just ask if there's any questions of council members for either Luke, Ross, or Andy? If not, we can move along to the next presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I believe we have the Adams up next.
Our next presentation is by J.J. Adams.
Okay. J.J., the floor is yours.
All right. Well, appreciate the opportunity to come here and, and present our vision. Also, just want to thank Karen, the Community Development Group, and, and the Commissioners for working together to make the most out of a difficult situation. I'm talking about the, the buildings, and I know it's been a sticky issue, but it, it is a, these are uncertain times when it comes to what are things going to cost next week or next month, and that kind of thing. And so moving quickly and, and being action-oriented, I think it favors getting something, you know, and I'm not talking about taking it down, but I'm talking about since that's happened, moving quickly, I think, helps any, you know, anyone who's going to try and actually put shovels in the dirt at that site. So I just want to compliment the Community Development Agency and the, and the Commissioners for making that happen. Yeah, so my name's J.J. Adams, and, and I'm the majority owner and general manager of the Finland Hotel. So we have the north half of this block. And on that site, we, we have a number of residential units, 34 residential units. We also have some office and retail tenants. And, and we have a staff of 32, including four maintenance and engineering type folks. So we, we feel like we kind of know the local market pretty well. We're also, along with the partners, we have a lot of construction projects. We've got construction projects happening here in Missoula, Paradise Valley. And so we have a good sense of, you know, how to, how to get things financed and done, even in today's difficult and volatile times when it, and I'm talking about availability of goods, availability of contractors, price of financing, that sort of thing. But this is a really exciting opportunity. And, and, and at least for my part, I can, I can appreciate Joe's sentiment that was expressed earlier, but for my part, it's, it's exciting to think that something else of, of size and substance could go into this neighborhood and exemplify. Also appreciate the, you know, Luke and his crew. That's, I mean, that's the right kind of thing we need to happen here, frankly, is in, it's been a while since a big, beautiful building was built in the uptown core, in the commercial core. And, and by putting the, you know, marketing these lots together, you at least get to see some proposals along that line. So I, I just compliment everyone on their work so far. It's, it, you know, it's a, it's a exciting, there, there are only, only so many linear feet of Park and Broadway and, you know, Maine and Montana. And, and, and I, you know, it's been a long time coming. There's a lot of people that are fixing up buildings, and man, it looks great. It, it really does. It, and I think that the next key to revitalizing, revitalizing this neighborhood is going to be projects like this, where, you know, what are, what are we going to do with those empty teeth? And, and kind of like, you know, people come to us and say, hey, thanks so much. Thanks for your investment. You showed so much financial courage fixing up the Finland. And I say, man, go, you know, Ron Yuland, you know, Nick Chiavitt, like those people, that was economic courage, in my view, right? Like, they were the ones that went and showed that you can take a great big historic building in Butte, you know, put the teams together and, and all that kind of thing, show that there is demand. And, and I see this as an opportunity, quite frankly, to show what to do with missing teeth. So I think it's a really great and exciting opportunity, and where something can be done that's really beautiful and aspirational, and, and, and I, frankly, I like their images, you know, the red brick and the iron. It's, it's, it kind of fits the, fits the character that I, I think we all recognize in uptown. So, you know, it's been tough, but this is, this is like my napkin, basically. It's a, it's a, it's a little nice presentation, nicer presentation of a napkin that just says, well, you got about, your cost of construction's about, you know, so much per square foot. This is so much per square foot, that kind of thing. And so we just took a real quick, broad brush, and, and what a range, huh? And, and the reason for the range is because, you know, what would you use for a num, there's, there's a lot of variables when you're, when you're trying to figure out financial viability of a project like this. And, and, and we know, right? Like, sometimes, sometimes office space is, you can't give it away in uptown, and sometimes there's a movie that wants to come and shoot, and you can get a, a good rate for it, right? And so we just kind of took a, a lot of, what we did is each of those variables, we, we plugged in a range, and then we just calculated the absolute worst of all the variables and the absolute best of all the variables, and spit out some of these numbers. And so they, I mean, they, at least for the numbers we used, and, and I, and different developers will use different numbers, all of, all between housing, retail, and office, we think they can all be viable if you're an optimist, I think is, is the summary, right? And, and these are, and I should also add, this is, this is a spec, you know, for the office approach and the retail. That, that's building on spec and then hoping you can bring in a tenant. So it's a little different than, you know, if these guys plan to occupy it themselves, there, you know, that would be a little different, how they would analyze that. And so the proposal that we came up with is, is kind of a mix, and it's, it's mostly multifamily, eight multifamily units, and then a couple of retail units. And if we happen to win out, Luke's going to be one, one of my first calls, to see if he wants to put a store in there, right? But anyway, yeah, so that's, that's what we came up with. We, we think that that's a really cool way to, you know, keep that, and go wall-to-wall, and, and keep that historic uptown feel and aesthetic is, is, is important to us as well. And, and we think that's a nice way to do it. And, and I don't know, I mean, quite frankly, I don't know that it's the, the most desirable retail in uptown right now. And what I mean is, is if you're, if you consider the center of retail to be around Park and Maine, you kind of have to walk by some stuff that's not retail to get there. And so at, at least in our analysis, we've kind of thought that you might have a hard time a hard time marketing to, you know, some chain or something that, that wanted to, that wanted a lot of foot traffic. But, you know, professional office space, or, or there's a whole host of other kinds of retail that, that are a little bit more destination oriented, that, that can fit in this, in, in as part of our vision. And then, and then you could also have some live works, so people could live upstairs, and, you know, maybe they give massages, or, I don't know, you know, have kind of a retail front, though, and live and work in the same building. We have a sim, you know, this is, this is our vision for the aesthetic. Again, these aren't, you know, actual renderings, but this is just an expression of, of what we think fits in the neighborhood. Here's a couple more. And the one on the right, the one on the left is more about materials, the one on the right is more about structure, right? Like kicking some spaces out, dropping some spaces back type thing, walking up to the little bit of walk-up. And then this is a rendering of that, of what we do actually envision. And so, you can see on either side, those windows, those are, those are retail zones, and then you would, you'd be able to pass through to a courtyard that's behind, and then, and then parking off, that you come in off the alley to utilize the parking. So, we've got, as I said, there's two retail units on the main floors, and then upstairs, we have eight residential, they're all two-bedroom units, very nice. This is market rate, this is, this is aspirational, nice market rate housing in Uptown. Here's the view from Park in Arizona. This is, this is from Park in Wyoming, but now looking down on it, and so they've also got some rooftop zone. Every residential unit has a balcony or a patio, and they all have parking. This is an overview, so the, the blue is a residential, that's how you get up into the residential and, and kind of that space around that breezeway that you saw, that went through the middle. And then the retail is the orange there, you can see the little grassy area in the back, and then, and then at the top, along the alley, that's, that's where the parking's located. So now, we're moving up to the second floor, where it's all residential. Again, third floor, all residential, and then this would be the rooftop where they could put the barbecues or whatever. Okay, so the project elements, as I've shown you, include eight apartments, two retail-slash-office units. All the units are two-bedroom, some of them are 1,050 up to 1,400. As I said, each one has a balcony and parking. Each of the retail units are 2250, and the total building is, is about 16,000 square We currently, we're projecting a, a $4 million build. We expect that to generate something like 50,000 annual property tax revenue, and the annual rents are kind of mid-market, or, well, they're a little higher than mid-market, but not too bad at $16 a square foot. It's about what we get in the Finland. Scheduling timeline, first milestone is to get it in hand, you know, to get control of the property. As I said, the, I think, was it, since the, since the announcement first came out, our, the interest rate projection that we're using for another project that's about, that's about to go into contract, it's gone up 1 and 3/4% in about two to three months. So, it's, yeah. Appreciate the, the need for deliberation, but the, but so far, unless, unless we want to ride this out and, and, and hope that things come down, things are getting more expensive all the time, but inflation, I don't know, you know, we, but there is a window to get a deal done, to get something built. Second milestone would be full design entitlement, we think that'd take about 90 days. And then, we would, you know, once we have that full design, get our full financing, closing in place. Construction, we think, could take, we're going to give ourselves 18 months, and probably get it done, you know, but we think that's a fair estimate. We're starting to see some, there's a couple of people in the room that may know better than I do what's available right now, but, but we're starting to see a little bit of loosening on availability of contractors and materials and price of materials. And then, and then after that 18-month period, next milestone, obviously become fully occupied. Terms of community benefit, that, as somebody, you know, I used to teach economics, and, and it's been, and I've even said this at this podium before, I think that it's really important that Uptown, whether it's this one or not, good market rate housing projects that are walkable to our retail, restaurants, coffee shops, that kind of thing, is, is important for Butte. It's going to, it's going to support those businesses, you know, because when people are, when, when people organize their life that way, when they want to live close to the coffee shop type thing, they go a lot, right? They don't go once in a while, they go a lot. They also pick up trash along the way, they, you know, become very interested in beautification and, and, and all these other things. So, there's a bunch of reasons that having, having some nice quality housing in Uptown is, we think is really good for the neighborhood. And, and then we just want to do something we can all be proud of, you know? One of the things about us is that, you know, we get, we enjoy this synergy, right? Because a good investment on the south half of the block is going to help the investment we've already made on the north half. And so, we, you know, if, if, if someone else wants to spend a lot more money and do something a lot nicer way, that, you know, that doesn't hurt our feelings either way. But, but we do think there's a great, think, you know, this is our vision, this is what we would do with it. And we can use this current, the staff we already have to help, you know, do maintenance calls and care for this place. And, yeah, we, we just think that there's certain economies of scale, and, and, you know, it, at least for us, we want to put shovels in the dirt. So, at least for us, if we can go fairly quickly, that, that, it makes it more likely that we can actually get it done in a, in a short horizon. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any questions from council members? All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm assuming that we have one more to go. Karen, I'll let you introduce them again.
Yeah, sure, thank you. That was enough, I have 15, but.
Our next presenter is Mr. Jay Platt, and he is a handout, there won't be a PowerPoint.
Old-fashioned. Hi, well, I'll wait till you guys hand out them. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. So, if you, you, you want to take just a minute and read this, but I'll read it with you. You know, I'm Jay Platt, our family is the owner of the old East Park Whalen Tire Building, I think it's 101 Park. It's adjacent to these lots that are currently in question. And at the moment, I believe that we're the successful bidder on the adjacent lots that the city is awkward. I'd like to give you some history of my family in, in Butte. My mother, Zelda Rayfish, was born in Butte, 1922. Her mother Nancy Rayfish, a Russian immigrant from Kiev, Ukraine, owned and operated a rooming house located at 1 North Clark. Nancy raised seven children, who were my aunts and uncles from Butte. Some of those kids grew up to own and operate businesses in Butte, i.e. Newman's Bootery, some of you may or may not have remembered that. From the time I can remember, I visited Butte, Butte with my mother, and at least twice a year, I spent time with all these families, as well many of their friends in and around Silver Bow County. Subsequently, our family owned and operated a business called Platt Electric Supply, with locations throughout Montana and Butte. I mention all of this to help shed light that myself and our family are well-seated from this area. Our interests, knowledge, and experience in this area is deep-rooted, and we still have cousins that live in Butte, Glenn, Patty, and Kinsley Rayfish. Therefore, we do not have pure self-serving interests in the long-term development of the property. We understand it's important to be respectful of the community. I believe that all of the bidders that we have, that we have the most experience and care. If my mother was alive today, it would have been paramount to her. Zelda had an incredibly strong bonds to Butte. Harmony is a privately-owned, operated, family business, 100% Platt family. All of our developments, ownership is privately funded internally, we have zero debt and zero partnerships. Therefore, we are the ones that make 100% of the decisions. We have no third-party pressure to effect or force completion of any such project. Step one, our proposal is make properties available to subject development and construction of areas surrounding such properties, such as we have currently with the Whalen Building and the construction company that, that currently leases that, that's using it to build out certain projects in the area. And step two is the development of surrounding areas come to light, a fair determination of type, best use, would be understood for such specific properties. If you'd like more information or whatever, please don't hesitate to ask. Bottom line, I think it's a little early, and I think that, you know, what we offer is, look, we're not encumbered by any means, regardless of whatever happens to this economy, today or in the future. So, we don't have to go to a bank, we don't have to use third-party lenders, and we can, if we so desire, sit on this for an undetermined amount of time, to wait and make sure that it's developed for best use. I have one, well, that's right, are there any questions?
Any questions from council members?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Platt, for the presentation, please. Jay, thank you. So, you, as of now, you have no potential proposal, plan, just owning, owning the property is your, is your plan right now?
Mr. Platt.
Well, I do have a third, I, I, I do have a third option, and that third option is an individual that's in this room today. Kinsley, you want to stand up just for a second? Kinsley, I don't know if many of you know her, she's my cousin's daughter from Butte, and she might very well have some short-term ideas for use of that property. And I would be more than happy to support her if that was to the likes of you guys. Long-term, different story, but short-term, she may have some interesting ideas. She's a good kid, she works hard, she's involved in all kinds of community sorts of things, and, you know, she would have my support.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No further questions, thank you, Jay, for your presentation.
You bet, and thank you guys for the opportunity, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Ms. Burns, you want to wrap up the presentations for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw and members of council. So, now we would, the committee that has been formed to evaluate these proposals, will be taking a look at these proposals and preparing an evaluation, and then bringing it back possibly to this body. That committee does include, obviously, a very strong participation by the Rescue Mission, because they do own two of these lots. And so, that would be something that we'll be discussing, and we'll, we'll keep the council appraised of those activities as, as we move forward through those processes. Unfortunately, the Rescue Mission, they do have a representative here tonight, but they are experiencing some illness through their board and through their staff, and so they were unable to send more representation tonight, so they do apologize for that, but we do have a representative in the audience, and she, she is here listening on, on their behalf, so I just wanted to make that, let you all know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reardon.
Yes, I have a question for.
Certainly.
Yes.
Ms. Burns and Mr. Reardon.
All right.
Commissioner Reardon.
I really appreciate all the people that came and made the presentation tonight, followed closely, following Mr. McGrath's plight concerning this decision and all that, and at this time, I was always under the assumption myself that these lots were together as a parcel, and that I believe, and I could be wrong, we can ask county attorney Joyce, is basically the way that these properties were presented as a whole, if they were separate properties, I never did see any clarification to that. Am I wrong?
Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Chairman Shaw and Commissioner Reardon. In the RFP, it clearly states that they are separate properties, that they are not owned jointly by any one individual or entity. So, they are completely separate properties.
I have another question for you, and Mr. McGrath.
Commissioner Reardon.
Oh, I'm sorry. In Mr. McGrath's, I guess, proposal here and all that stating why he had some issues with this and all that, is that, number one, it sounded like to me that there was some maybe deal going before, basically the other buildings were demolished, that I don't know if that building next door was up, or is it true that Joe was offered at any time that third lot next to his existing business?
Commissioner Reardon and Chairman Shaw and members of council, I'm not sure if this is the correct venue to discuss that at length, but I will make some statements regarding that. Since it was a public comment on things on the agenda and not part of our presentations tonight, I don't want to overstep. I'll look to the county attorney to tell me when I've gotten close, but I do want to, I do want to address what you just said.
All right.
I do, I do appreciate that opportunity.
Right.
So, before Butte Silver Bow even agreed to take 135 East Park, as you remember, 135 East Park was owned by Silver Bow Properties.
Correct.
135 East Park was in a dilapidated state. We were working with those property owners to try to market that property. They asked me to help them market their property, because they needed someone to take ownership of that property in terms of what was needing to happen at 135 East Park. And so, I did make some phone calls to property owners, and did ask if anyone was interested in purchasing that from Silver Bow Properties, not from Butte Silver Bow. And at that time, Mr. Stone was not interested in pursuing that, and so then we moved ahead with our plans to, you know, 135 could not be rehabilitated by Silver Bow Properties, and you know that story, so I won't rehash that whole, whole mess that had to happen. But I also want to say that in any of my conversations with the property owners to either side, either adjoining property owner, it was clear that there were two ways that we would be able to sell Butte Silver Bow-owned property, and that was either through an RFP, developer's packet type process, or through an auction. And at the time, when I had conversations with property owners, we didn't know which direction we were going to go. We didn't know for sure how we would offer these properties once demolition was complete. And this is, I'm speaking of 135 East Park, I'm not speaking of any other properties or the Rescue Mission's owned properties. And so, I did let people know that it most likely would be a developer's packet, and how it would be a public process. So, that is what I conveyed to property owners and neighbors.
Follow-up, Commissioner Reardon.
Here's what I'm looking at, and I'm sure everybody around this table's looking at, is we want to be fair. We want to be fair to everybody, and I, I get the notices, I get the publications and all that stuff, but we have, have a gentleman, and I, I know Joe very alone, a little bit, blah, blah, blah. Is basically the fact is that, when you, the deal come up about the lots, what you explained and all that, it is, it's still, even as we look with the presentations and things like that, is basically they're still listed as one parcel. I mean, well, I mean, am I wrong, because basically we're dealing with three lots that this bid was proposed on, is that correct?
Ms. Burns?
I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman Shaw and Commissioner Reardon, I'm not sure what the question is. There are three separate lots, they are legally described as three separate lots. Two are under ownership of the Butte Rescue Mission, and one is under ownership of Butte Silver Bow, and that is in bold in the RFP, is stated how they would be trans- And that is, in bold, in the RFP, is stated how they would be transferred to, the winning proposal would be transferred from Butte Rescue Mission and from Butte-Silverbow in separate closings.
If you don't have any, I'm just, I'm reading this right off of the RFP, which I sent to everybody, by the way, just so you know. And it is a little, in my opinion, a little confusing. It says, 123 to 135 East Park Street, legally described as Butte Townsite S13 Township 3, North Range 8 West Block 27, Lot 15, East 2, 15 All of 16, 17, and 18. It appears, it says legally described. I actually got the same impression, to be honest, just the way it was written. And below that, it does say lots 15 and 16 are owned by BRM, and Lot 18 is owned by BSB. But I believe that this full, I sent the entire copy so everyone can see what it looked like, and it saying legally described, I think that was a bit confusing. But, to be honest, at this point, this is a presentation. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, and if, I'm sure we will receive something from Karen. We have, it is our duty to decide if we want to accept or not accept whatever proposal is next comes before us, because it's contingent on our, you know, approval. So, at this time, I think that's pretty much all that we have to say about it, and I appreciate Karen coming forward and answering the questions. So, Commissioner Fortune.
Just my question, is it, the RFP isn't value-based? I'm assuming it's kind of the best fit for the property? I guess, my question is, can they put an RFP in? Is it, is it that big a deal?
What was the question, Josh? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
If, my question is if Mr. McGrath could put an RFP in, I guess if, if it's not a value-based proposal and a best fit, it's not like he has a unfair advantage on anything, so.
Ms. Burns, I mean, again, this is probably a little bit outside of the purview of this presentation, but I'll allow you to answer.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw, members of council, Commissioner Fortune. So, when we do issue an RFP, it is published for a certain amount of times, and it does have a date time certain that we would accept proposals until. So, if we were to reopen the process at some point, that would be the opportunity that anyone else would have in the community to put together a proposal and bring it forward. But that is not what we are, that's not the path we're pursuing at this moment. We are working through the process that we started and trying to get to a conclusion with that.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman, Madam Chair. Karen, just a question, so you'll take the three proposals back to the, to what's board?
Ms. Burns.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw.
Is that inappropriate, Karen?
And Commissioner O'Neil and members of council. So, the area is a committee that would review these proposals, made up of myself and other department heads and members of the Butte Rescue Mission, and along with the chief executive. So, we will review those proposals, rank them accordingly to what was the criteria in the RFP, and then move that forward for consideration.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you. So, whatever ones you guys approve or whatever will come back, could they all be approved? And then, who picks them, then?
Ms. Burns?
We would make a recommendation, I'm sorry, I apologize, Chairman Shaw and Commissioner O'Neil, members of council, we would make a recommendation, I'm speaking as the global "we" of our committee that I just described, would make a recommendation on one proposal or possibly no proposals. I mean, there, we would make a recommendation back to this body for you to make a decision.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Karen. The process and procedure has been noted and it's been, you know, followed. This procedure and process has been followed, and with all due respect to Mr. McGrath, he didn't get a proposal in, so, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we have three proposals, and send it back to the committee and let them send us a recommendation, and we'll do our job as everyone else has so far. Thank you.
Anything further from council? Okay, again, thank you, Karen, and we will be simply placing this on file because it is a presentation, we'll do that further into our agenda. Okay, moving along, I'm at Section 2, Communications. The item one is Communication Number 2022-444, James Dolan, 315 West Fourth Street, Anaconda, Montana, requesting council commissioners to address the general decline in the condition of the parking structure located on West Park Street. The municipal parking structure on West Park Street needs some serious attention before someone becomes sick and/or injured by the physical conditions that appear to be currently unabated and/or tolerated there. We have held this in abeyance to see what process are being taken. And before I call on chief executive, I would ask for any questions from council, how you'd like to proceed with this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll wait for the chief executive to speak on it.
All right, otherwise, thank you, Chief Executive Gallagher.
Madam Chair, members of council, as you know, that there's been a lot of things in the public eye about the, about the parking garage. We are taking a lot of steps in improving the safety, the cleanliness, and things in the parking garage. Currently, what we have is we've got, we've worked with the sheriff, every member of each patrol, as a shift change and throughout there, they are being requested by the sheriff to take one drive-through through the parking garage by each police officer during a shift. We have a cleaning procedure that we have worked with the various departments. Parks is going up and power washing many of the areas. We're going to open up the, the bathrooms have been closed because they'd been abused. We're going to use the same, we're working on the same type of system that we did with the public restrooms in the parks, that they will be cleaned daily as well and opened up to the public. And we are working on putting a booth, actually, in there where we will, we're looking at stationing one of our parking officials in there during the working day, and then when it's open at night, when we don't request people to pay, we're looking at, do we need to have security placed in there as well? So, those are, those are the steps we're doing. We're taking a look at what the cost measures are going to be with all of those things, but we have, we're, there's not a 100% complete plan in place, but we have things in action that are happening right now.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just mainly a comment, glad that, I know that the process is working out, we're trying to figure something out, but just a comment on that, like, the only possible way to keep that thing is to be have 24-hour security there. I'm sure that'd be really, really expensive for taxpayers to pay for something like that, but truthfully, that's the only option, or to put a fence around the bottom parts and secure it all. I mean, there's no other way. Another, I mean, hopefully, the policing does work. I mean, at times, it's going to be tough, we're short on police as it is, it's going to be, I mean, there's other areas that they're going to have to probably attend to, right, before they get to go there, but just to comment on that, I'm glad that, I think that the public doesn't realize what is, that it is, there's a try for that, that there's something going on behind the scenes, it's not just being left for everyone to go in there and have a good time in there. So, just, I guess I just appreciate the effort.
Any other comments from council members? Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief Executive Gallagher, I appreciate the efforts that everybody's been making. I have been hearing from members of the public that they've noticed. I think that it's really great, and I do think that the obligation is there for us to protect our investment that we've made in that parking garage, and explore those opportunities for security and put a parking officer there in a booth. I think we owe it to the public, they made a huge investment, we all made a huge investment to put that parking garage there. It is a great asset to the uptown. I've used it, I use it almost every time I go uptown, so I love it. That being said, I do think there's opportunities, maybe with URA money or something, to fund security, and I would, you know, ask Karen, Director Burns, to maybe explore that, and maybe she could tell me if I'm wrong. But yeah, I want to thank you for the efforts that you've been making. My preference would be to hold this until we get a little bit closer to, you know, answers to some of the questions that the chief executive's looking into.
And I just want to add, too, just today, I had somebody say they saw people up on that top floor again, and it didn't look like they belonged there, and I'm more concerned about liability and preserving the asset is, you know, it's an amazing asset, so I'm not sure what can be done about that, but that's probably one of the scariest places, that very top floor. I don't know if we can, do people park up there? I guess they do, but I don't think we can close it off. I think the original plan was it could be used for, you know, in a, in the proper manner for gatherings and things like that, but it, I don't think that's really come to fruition very much, so I'm more worried about that upper floor and liability, but I, we can just continue to hold that. Commissioner Shea, if that's what you're, okay, that doesn't require a motion, so. Commissioner Callahan, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to make a comment also. You know, I think we've been dealing with this same problem since we first opened, and we've had all kinds of suggestions, all kinds of people putting input in. I think, I just would like to put an emphasis on, we have to deal with the people causing the problem as well, you know? We just can't turn our head and say, you know, there's nothing we can do with them. These people, we got to catch them and deal with them. The only way we're going to stop it, we can spend all the money in the world, they're going to keep coming back, we have to find some solution to that, and I just appreciate your striving. Thank you.
Okay, all right, moving along then, I will hold that in abeyance until further notice and further updates from our chief executive. Item two is Communication Number 2022-469, excuse me, Kelly Sullivan, Headwaters RC&amp;D Area Inc., requesting council commissioners concurrence to have representatives in the Montana Department of Environmental Quality, including Jason Saylor, give a presentation to the full council on Wednesday, October 5th. We will hold that communication until that date. Item three is Communication Number 2022-471, Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting council commissioners for time on the September 28, 2022 council meeting for presentations related to the proposed development of 123 to 135 East Park Street. We did have that presentation, so Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, move to place Communication Number 2022-471 on file.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 2022-471 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? And would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Ten yea, zero nay, motion passes. Item four, Communication 2022-486, John Sullivan, Government Building Manager, requesting council commissioners authorization to allow the requests for proposals to be opened on October 5, 2022, regarding the Motherlode Theater Fire Annunciation and Alarm System Design Build. We will hold that until October 5th. Item five is Communication Number 2022-490, Ed Lester, Butte-Silverbow Sheriff, requesting council commissioners concurrence for positions of Lieutenant and Sergeant in the Butte-Silverbow Law Enforcement Department. He respectfully asks that we concur with him in the promotion of these officers, and we did concur with that last week, so they've been officially promoted. However, Sheriff Lester was wanting to introduce the gentlemen or ladies that are involved. So, Sheriff Lester.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, I sent this in last week and had planned to introduce, as many of the 15 officers listed on that communication and have come up before the council. Unfortunately, I was exposed to COVID and didn't think they or you would rather me, I figured you'd probably rather have me stay home. So, I canceled them coming to the meeting, you did take action and concur with the confirmations and promotions, and so I had intended to introduce them tonight, but I see only one of them is here tonight. It's a long process, and it's not an easy process, so I will introduce the gentleman that's here tonight, and then if, I'll talk to the other people who have been promoted and confirmed, see if they, they're interested in coming before the council, because it's something that, it's really unprecedented that we promoted this many people and we're hiring this many officers. In the time I've been here, we have hired more dispatchers and detention officers and police officers than any time in the history of this department. So, it's part of the great resignation, and we're on our way back up the hill. So, I'll introduce Lieutenant Ray Vaughn. He was a sergeant in detectives, took the promotional test and was, scored very highly in the test and was promoted to lieutenant, and unfortunately for Ray, that meant that he had to go back to the street, and he will now be in charge of the FTO program, which is the Field Training Officer Program, for officers, detention officers, and dispatchers. And we've never really, we've had somebody in charge of that for years, but never a lieutenant, so to speak, dedicated to that program specifically, because we are training so many people right now, and so that's Ray's assignment in the near future. He's here with his wife Julie, and just congratulations to Lieutenant Ray Vaughn and his wife Julie, who is the smarter side of the family.
Okay, well, congratulations.
And I'll talk to the other promoters and confirmees and see if they're interested in coming to see you folks, and we'll come up and I'll send in another communication for introduction purposes, because they deserve the recognition, but it, between them working and off and in bed and getting ready for the next shift, they're just, we only got one here, but we'll put in the communication for the next ones. Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, Sheriff Lester. Commissioner Fredrickson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to place Communication Number 2022-490 on file.
We have a second to place Communication 2022-490 on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? The clerk, please record the vote.
Ten yea, zero nay.
Ten yea, zero nay, motion passes. Item six is Communication Number 2022-491, Maria Potravina, TIBID Secretary, requesting council commissioners authorization for a presentation of the fiscal year 2023 work plan and budget for the BSB Tourism Business Improvement District, TIBID, and to request a public hearing on October 5, 2022, to present the fiscal year 2023 work plan and budget. So, we'll hold that in abeyance until October 5th. And the last item is Communication Number 2022-494, Robert Farren, 3501 Hancock Avenue, Butte, requesting council commissioners authorization to purchase a parcel of land owned by BSB, properties on the west boundary of 2935 Richardson Street, Butte, Montana, 59701. I plan to put an entry-level price, single-family dwelling on the property. This is actually sitting in our land sales department, and we will await their response. So, at this time, we have an opportunity for any public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. I don't see any faces I don't recognize out there, so anything else to come before us? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Shaw. Friendly amendment. Some may know, some didn't know, but Commissioner Fredrickson was nominated to serve the term for Art Noonan, who passed away, and I think that's quite an honor to have someone from the Butte-Silverbow Council to be nominated, and he really didn't even know what was going to happen, and he wasn't there, but the nominee turned out to be Jennifer Lynch, and I wish her the best, but congrats to Commissioner Fredrickson, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
And I really am glad you're not getting it. I don't want to lose you. No offense. All right, Sean, thank you, Jim, that was very nice. Okay, anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone in favor, say aye. Aye? Oppose? Good night, everyone.